Well, good morning. I'd like to thank everybody for coming to this Board of Commissioner meeting of April 6th of 2022. I would like to remind everybody that this meeting is a public meeting and is being recorded via audio and visual as well. Awards, recognitions, and correspondence. And I don't see the person in the room. Go ahead.
I will go see.
Okay.
I told you.
Do you guys have anything else for awards, correspondence?
No.
Might be a good time to remind them that I'm going to be there.
Yeah, this would be a great time for that. I want to remind everybody, or tell everybody, and I remind everybody, remind those who know and tell those who don't. Commissioner Doran has, was going to have to leave early today. He's got, it was Connect Oregon.
Connect Oregon.
So, so he's gonna, we put the heavier stuff at the top of the agenda so he could get out and take care of the things that he needs to do that'll be very beneficial to the county, so we appreciate you doing that.
I appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Let's see. Well, I guess we're waiting, we can do the approval of minutes.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Further discussion? All fair of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. Any additions to the agenda?
Nothing. I'm all right.
Okay.
I did, I said no.
Yeah, just say no.
Any public input and recognition of visitors for anything that's, that's not on the agenda? So if you have something you want to talk to the Commissioner about now, it'd be your time if it's not already on the agenda. Okay? And, let's see. Yeah, okay. We can go ahead with the awards now, with the recognition. So this is for January, February, March 2022, Employee of the Quarter Excellence Award. This goes to Tierney Simey.
[applause]
That work is priceless. I'm gonna read this real quick.
What?
Your face said it all, right?
It does.
The Umatilla County Employee Excellence Committee was created to acknowledge and commend the efforts of employees who serve the citizens of the county efficiently and effectively with a focus on professional development and outstanding customer service. In that spirit, the committee wishes to share with you the nomination letter from your peers that warranted this recognition. Congratulations.
Well, stand up there.
So, Tierney is the planning department's first line of communication with members of the public. She is the voice of our department and always greets callers with enthusiasm and helpfulness. Although Tierney is not a planner, she is very knowledgeable in land use and always answers questions to the best of her abilities. Sometimes this means assisting patrons with completing permit applications, helping them identify a property without an address, or answering zoning questions. Tierney is happy to help with other projects and troubleshooting issues that her coworkers are having with the printer and email, et cetera. She is a mastermind of multitasking. On top of all of her other job duties, Tierney also brings life to the office. She often makes everyone's day with a simple smile and joke. Tierney is a tremendous asset to the planning department and Umatilla County. When she deserves, much deserved paid time off, our office feels her absence and a true understanding of the work she does behind the scenes. She deserves the Employee Excellence Award and so much more. Congratulations, Tierney.
Oh, my gosh.
We also get a, with getting the award of Employee of the Quarter, you also are awarded eight hours of paid time off on the county. You get, you must get prior approval from your supervisor before using this voucher. If you return this voucher with your time card when used. If employee leave for any reason before PTO is used, it has no catch value, so. So make sure you utilize this, and you also get a parking spot.
I'm thrilled.
For a quarter.
A whole quarter, yes.
What?
But.
Well, guys, you bought me.
And you have a certificate.
You did. They all came with treats this morning, and I said, are you guys throwing me a surprise party? Megan said, it's the middle of the week, why would we do that?
That's right.
Then you also get candy and a cup.
So I'll just see you later today.
Okay. I have a white one on for you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Just to be sure.
Yes.
Thank you, guys. It feels really good to be recognized. I appreciate that.
Well deserved. Congratulations.
Well, we have a scintillating agenda. Tierney is not required to remain.
Okay. I do have some things I need to do. But they go again so much. I thought we were here to recognize Megan. She's a great worker, so I don't know. But Megan said so, so I just, I really appreciate it.
And you're right, she is a great worker. Okay, so item number one on our agenda is the food bank grant application. We're going to go into public hearing mode for that, so we'll suspend our regular meeting and go into public hearing mode. Food bank grant application.
Okay, this is going to be, first off, a public hearing. This is on a CDG Impact Assistance Program grant. Previously, you approved it. This is now time to schedule for a public hearing, which requires a reading of a public notice, which I don't have with me. I have to go get it. I'm sorry.
It's, you want to use my computer?
No, it's not on the computer.
Public notice and notice of public. Somebody mark this down on the calendar. Doug didn't have something with him.
I think he did. I've seen in nine years.
Yeah, I think he actually does. This is it.
I think Tierney was surprised.
I think she saw it on her face.
Her face was surprised.
I wish you could have seen it, Bob.
We should have had somebody up here taking a picture.
Oh, my goodness.
No kidding.
Wish they'd given her a taffy.
Oh, she didn't take candy with her, did she? Well, that's fortunate for us.
Didn't she get your parking spot for a quarter?
Well, yours, apparently.
That's pretty impressive stuff. That's, that's pretty hard to date off.
You can read it in Spanish.
Yes.
I'm sorry about that. Public notice and notice of public hearing. Umatilla County is eligible to apply for a 2021 Community Development Block Grant from Business Oregon. Community Development Block Grant funds come from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The grants can be used for public housing and housing improvements, primarily for persons with low and moderate incomes. The state expects to receive approximately 13 million in new federal funds during 2021 for grants to non-entitlement cities and counties for eligible projects. The maximum grant that a city or county can receive under the COVID-19 Impact Assistance Program for food back, food bank assistance activities is 250,000. Umatilla County is preparing an application for a 2021 Community Development Block Grant from the Business Oregon. It is estimated that the proposed project will benefit at least 2,000 people per month, of which 100% will be low or moderate income. A public hearing will be held by the Umatilla County Board of Commissioners on April 6th at 9:00 a.m., remotely or in person. Only to the meeting can be found at the county website. The address for the meeting is Room 130 Umatilla County Courthouse, 216 Southeast Fourth Street, Pendleton, Oregon. The purpose of this hearing is for the city, for the Board of Commissioners to obtain citizen reviews and to respond to questions and comments about community development and housing needs, especially the needs of low and moderate income persons, as well as other needs to the community that might be assisted with the Community Development Block Grant project and the proposed project. Written comments are also welcome and must be received by 5:00 p.m. on April 5th at the address of the courthouse or by email to me. Both oil and, oral and written comments will be considered by the Board of Commissioners in deciding whether to apply. The location of the hearing is accessible to persons with disabilities. More information about the Oregon Community Development Block Grants, proposed project, and records about Umatilla County's past use of CDB grant funds is available for public view at the courthouse during regular business hours. Permanent involuntary displacement of persons or persons is not anticipated as a result of the proposed project. If displacement becomes necessary, alternatives will be examined to minimize the displacement and provide required reasonable benefits to those displaced. Any low and moderate income housing that is demolished or converted to another use will be replaced. And also, for, this is also available in Spanish. The Umatilla is eligible para aplicar a una serie en 2021 del Community Block Grant que se ve es de Business Oregon. Los subsidios del Community Development Block Grant, el bloque superior para desarrollar y o comunitario viviendo sea al U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, el departamento de vivienda y desarrollo bueno de Estados Unidos. Los subsidios pueden ser solicitados para inspecciones públicas y or mandaciones de costes para implemento por proporciones con y tercio más de a bajos. And so for, the, what's before the board is just to consider any public input into the possibility of whether or not you want to move forward with this application for the emergency food bank.
So now would be the time to ask for anybody in favor of it?
Yes. Is there any public testimony?
Anybody want to speak on the record in favor of the application? Okay, hearing none. Who goes against? Anybody wanting to speak against it for the record? Okay, hearing none.
And so what the Board at this time then can move forward after having this public hearing to actually file an application for the CDBG grant funds.
Okay, so we can wrap up the public hearing mode and go back to regular meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Any comments from the Commissioners?
No, I'll make a motion if you go back.
Okay, let's go back into the regular meeting and suspend our hearing mode, or adjourn our hearing mode and go back into regular meeting mode.
Move for sport.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Further discussion? One thing I want to say is, is anybody else surprised that Doug read that in Spanish?
Holy nails.
Yeah.
I had a sentence or two I didn't understand.
And he did have it in here.
Oh, yeah.
Very impressed. Okay, we have a motion. All fair of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, the second one is the City of Umatilla ordinance co-adoption public hearing. So again, we're going to suspend our regular meeting, go back into public hearing mode.
So on February 9th, 22, the Board approved the City of Umatilla's amendment request. This was in relation to ODOT's Power Line Quarry. On March 1st, the Umatilla City Council adopted ordinance 854, which officially amended their comprehensive plan to include this as a goal five site. The ordinance is now before the Board for co-adoption. For reference, the February 9th Board Packet is attached. This is the final step for that co-adoption approval.
Okay. And since we've done all of that, do we need to go for, those in favor again?
Yes, this is a public hearing.
Okay, so anybody who wants to speak in favor of this, or questions, now would be your chance. None in the room, any online? Saying none. Anybody want to speak in opposition? Looking in the room, online?
No.
Saying none. Okay. Any comments or questions or concerns from the Commissioners?
None from mine.
Okay, no? Okay, hearing none. Now can we go ahead and adjourn the public hearing? And we'll go back into regular meeting mode.
I would move to adopt ordinance number 2022-04.
Sir?
Got a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All fair of the motions, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. Thank you, Megan. Okay, number three, road transfer public hearing.
What's before the Board is a consideration for a transfer of two county roads. This will require a public hearing. Notice of this public hearing was posted as required by statute along the road. And what is before the Board for consideration is a transfer of East Airport Road from its intersection from 395 to South Otter Road, and a portion of South Otter Road from East Airport Road north to Highland Avenue. This was previously discussed at the time of the transfer dissolution of the Eastern Oregon Trade and Events Center. Since that time, some improvements have been made to both of these roads, and so what's before the Board is consideration of transferring these to the City of Hermiston. If you do approve this, the next one action would be refer to the City of Hermiston, and then they would consider whether or not to accept jurisdiction. And for the Board's decision, the basis under the statute is whether or not it will be in the public interest whether to transfer the roads to the City of Hermiston.
Okay. Okay, anybody want to speak in favor of the transfer? In the room, any online?
No.
Okay, saying and hearing none. Anybody speaking in opposition to the transfer? In the room? No. Online?
None online.
Okay, saying none. Any comments, question, Commissioners? Okay, saying none. At this point, we'll go ahead and adjourn the public hearing portion and go back to our regular meeting. Is there a motion?
I'd move to adopt order number RD 2022-02.
Sir?
Got a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All fair of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. Number four, road vacation.
Okay, what's before the Board is the consideration of whether or not to vacate a road right-of-way. This is not a roadway. It is purely a platted, unimproved public road. It was originally platted in 1910 as part of the subdivision, and they have been requested by property owners to vacate North Street. It's a portion of it that is adjacent to the property owners. The property owners have signed the petition, and as a result, all of the adjoining property owners have requested the vacation, so it does not require any type of further signature by any property owner or even a public hearing. So this does not require a public hearing, but is before the Board for consideration. A vacation report was submitted from the Public Works Department recommending vacation. This is an unimproved right-of-way that is currently of no use and is not being used by anyone. It is purely just on the plat, and so there might be some interest for any testimony if you want it. Both Wendy Kellington and Carla McLean are on the, appearing remotely, and they do have some further information if you want it, but most of it isn't. They put together a petition, which pretty much shows what is being requested. It meets all of the statutory requirements for the vacation, and so the matter is before the Board for your consideration and decision.
Any questions or comments by the Commissioners?
I'd move to adopt order RD 2022.
No, that's not a public.
Did I hear that?
I don't see one.
I heard a blink.
Okay.
Sorry, Commissioner, go ahead.
No, that's fine. Go ahead. Oh, I would move to adopt order number RD 2022-03.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All fair of the motions, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. Okay. Looks like we didn't have any questions for you two, so thank you for, for
Thanks, Carla.
Being available.
Yeah.
Okay, number five, excavator purchase.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Fellowes, Umatilla County Public Works Department. Before you this morning is a request to purchase a mini excavator for the road department. We've currently been renting this machine for six months. Our original intent for renting it was the number of bridge repairs that have been necessary due to poor inspections and some changes in the, in the manner of, of the inspections that required us to do some extra maintenance on these bridges. This particular machine was, was picked up because it was very small. We could work in the footprint of the road, and, and it, and it served all the purposes. We have a number, more bridges coming in the pipeline that are going to get tagged for load ratings, and so we, moving forward, we see quite, quite a bit of use for this machine. Currently, if we go ahead with the purchase option on this machine, 100% of the rent for the last six months will go against the purchase. This is a source wealth contract purchase, so it's, it qualifies under that. The request would be for the Public Works to go ahead and be able to purchase this machine for the remaining value of $67,344.
Okay, comments?
None from mine.
None.
Move for approval?
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All fair of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Harris Park Grant.
Okay, what, historically up at Harris Park, every, every two years, as we, as it becomes available to us, we apply for Oregon Parks Grants. It's, our, our cycle has come up. This grant cycle, we're, we would like to apply for the ability to put in one more vault toilet up there. It would do a good job of completing the ability for park guests to not have to go clear across the park for, to use facilities. And so really what we're requesting of the Board is the ability to go out for the grant.
No for adoption.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All fair of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm gonna say either.
Don't, 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 don't say that.
My recommendation is to call it the John. Don't be out of our chair.
It's left, aren't it?
Thank you, Doug.
Scratch that from the record, Melinda. Number seven, Sheriff's Office Wellness App Purchase.
Good morning, Commissioners. Nice to be here in person again.
Yes, sir.
What we have on the table today is a request to purchase a wellness app. And so we applied for a grant for $15,000, which is the one-year cost of the grant, of the program, product from Good Shepherd Health Foundation, and we received half of that, or $7,500 for the purchase. So we're requesting to fund the other portion from our budget. The Cortico Shield Wellness App is associated with Lexipol, which is a company we use for our policy manual, training bulletins. It's designed to provide 24/7, 365 resources for all of our staff who may be experiencing some sort of crisis, whether it's mental health-related, alcohol-related, or a wide variety of other things. It gives them a, resources to reach out to in case they're experiencing some sort of crisis. So it's an anonymous platform, so, and it's a mobile app, so they can reach out to those resources anytime, day or night, through their mobile app. And so it's part of our effort to create a more robust wellness program for our officers. You know, we all know that public safety in general is a stressful profession. Suicide rates are high, their, their alcoholism is prevalent, divorce rates are high, life expectancy after retirement is low. So whatever efforts we can take to try to help our staff, not only during their career, but in retirement, to be more well, and we all know if they're more well, then they can take care of our public better. So this is what we have in front of us, and any questions?
You know, I, I keep thinking of Gordon Graham, the founder of Lexipol, as you well know. He has this saying that I, I've heard a thousand times when I worked for the Sheriff's Office. It was, if it's predictable, it's preventable.
For sure.
And what you just said, clearly it's predictable. So I appreciate you bringing this to us.
I don't think it could be any more timely with the tragic suicide that just happened in the last, last 10 days.
Yep.
To put an extremely bright exclamation point on this request, so I would move for approval.
All right, man.
I don't know yet.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All fair of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thanks, Peter. For sure.
Creation of deputy positions. Morning, Sheriff.
Sheriff Rowan, Sheriff's Office. You know, I've been kind of working on this for quite a while, and, and I, like Jim, am happy to be here in person, face to face with you guys. It's kind of a refreshing atmosphere now. But anyway, we put this plan together in hopes of trying to continue to grow our patrol division within the county. As you all know, there's been times that lack of resources seems to get the better of us at times. And, you know, as we try to make these steps forward, eventually getting to a place where we can provide 24/7, 365 coverage is, I think, a key component to public safety. Out in the county, as you all know, we are pretty much the only game in town. OSP is more or less in the same boat. We are in lack of resources in the area. I know that there's efforts on the state's behalf to try to change that, but at the same time, I think it's going to be a difficult effort for them. And as you all know, we've, it's also very, we're kind of in a, in a weird era right now with things going on nationwide, and recruitment has been very difficult. We've had a couple of positions open since the first of the year, just trying to refill vacated retirements and whatnot. And just recently, we lost another patrol deputy leaving us and going to, to work for Hermiston Police Department, so. So I think that we're going to experience some savings along the path. But this would give us that flexibility to, to start that recruitment process and just try to be, move through those processes as quickly as possible. Happy to answer any questions.
I don't have, excuse me. I don't have any questions. We've, we've actually had some lengthy discussions on this. And Sheriff Rowan put together this plan in two thousand nineteen, long before I was here, but he's shared it with me several times. I, I, I would like to make the motion to support this, at least for discussion.
Well, we have had conversations, and I certainly support one.
So you would support? What is your recommendation?
You know, I think we need to move, continue to move up every year. We can only afford to some. You know, I would support one, certainly. You know, I see this as a, I, I see this action. If we continue to add deputies, I think it demonstrates our respect and appreciation for law enforcement in the county. And I think at this day and age, we need to, to continue to make it clear to residents that we strongly support the importance and values of law enforcement. But looking at the budget, I'm, I'm more concerned that we do this in steps. And so I certainly support one. So you have two motions to deal with.
I'll second both of them.
So did you, are you going to second his motion?
I, first of all, I'd have to take my motion off the table.
My, I agree with Commissioner's point. We've got to eventually get to the plan. We have to do it in steps.
And I don't disagree with that. I, I, we're having a lot of different discussions in a lot of different areas. And I think we skip skips over the time, in places where we have to skip. At this time, I, obviously, I'm a strong proponent of two positions. But to get this moving forward, I, I would, I would withdraw my motion for two and support the motion for one. Most definitely bring back this discussion as, as soon as possible and identifiable in the budget.
Okay. So we have a motion on the table for one position and a second. Any further discussion on that? All fair and motions, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Every step is a step closer, so not going to look, look at.
I should be clarifying from the methods that we appreciate moving in that direction.
Yes, yes.
And you're not done yet?
Yeah.
You don't.
No.
None of it is additional transport deputy position.
This, this was actually identified as a, a really kind of a big issue a couple of years ago, where because of some Ninth Circuit decisions and the inability to shackle or restrain inmates that are going to the courts, we've been forced to utilize two deputies to perform those transports along with the increased number of mental health transports, medical transports, and whatnot. And what we find ourselves doing many, many times is locking down the jail, not allowing any inmate movement while we pull a corrections officer off the floor to go and perform those duties. And so, or at times even two. Additionally, under Sheriff Littlefield's film, working with CCS, they're, we're entertaining an idea of also contracting some transport duties with CCS, predominantly in, in county type transports, like from the hospitals to Jennifer Ridge or some of the other facilities. And currently, they have a contract with Morro County to provide that service. And rather than go out to a, a private vendor, they would much rather go with public, public safety as their, their contract services. We don't know what that looks like yet. But with the amount of hours that we currently spend transporting, preparing for transports, it more than justifies the additional position. We do utilize retired and on-call transport deputies to help us. But there's, that gap is getting bigger and bigger as we move ahead. And Captain Franks came to me, really making that a priority and within his organization to, to see to it that, that we are able to move ahead. And, you know, for the time being, I think this will help bridge that gap. But I think we'll still have to continue to evaluate where we're at as we move ahead.
I have a comment of this. After spending yesterday at Stafford Hansel, on what was supposed to be an extremely slow day with that, with Daniel Hill out and, and visiting judges and all, there was a child support case that not only took transfer deputy, but took out every security deputy that we had. It was, it was challenging, to say the least, with, even with the folks we had. If, if there could have been another transfer person there, it would have saved a lot of heartache, not only for security, but for families and some, and a court situation too. I, I strongly support this transport position, especially going back and looking at the hours that we spend in that, in that role. I guess I was astounded when, when, because it really wasn't spelled out in Terry's, or in Sheriff Rowan's, two thousand nineteen plan exactly how many hours are, are used by a transport deputy. And it's, it's extraordinary. So I would move to support this.
Before I second it, I don't know who wrote the recommendation that we move in this direction, but it was incredibly compelling argument. And I, I congratulate whoever wrote that. And I would hope it becomes part of the record, and therefore I second it.
You've got a motion and a second, any further discussion? All fair and motions, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Am I done now?
Is this a good time that I excuse myself?
Yeah.
Taking care of your liaison area.
Move it up to the top for me.
Thank you.
Autograph that for you, or initial that before you go. She already knows she's next on the agenda. Look at her go. Before we start, Commissioner, Commissioner.
I'm rude enough as it is. I'm still on the roof, Commissioner.
Who are you?
Yeah, reword of it.
Good luck on your next venture, Commissioner.
Be very careful.
Okay, number ten, creation of position in the DD program.
Good morning, gentlemen. I'm Kim Beck, Director for Umatilla County Developmental Disabilities Program and Veteran Services. Today, I'm here to respectfully request a position. We'd be allowed to create a community systems developer position, which actually, I was here at the end of last year asking you guys for permission to go out for an RFP for our service equity responsibilities with the State of Oregon. And right after you guys gave me permission to do that, the state gave us some technical assistance. And what came out of that is our resources would be better spent if we actually brought on a position versus hiring a contractor, because this is a long-term project and endeavor. And therefore, I'm here to request a position be developed. We have the money in our budget. It's no general fund, and we will, will actually be using carryover dollars, which we have a little bit.
Yeah. And I have spoken directly about this, and I am in full support. And with that, seeing as only two of us here now, I will make the motion to approve the request.
Well, I will second it. On occasion, I kind of missed being directly involved with CDP, but nonetheless, they're moving forward, I'm quite sure.
You've got a motion and a second, all fair and motions, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, and you're still up, DD program payable.
So I've been before, do I need to introduce myself again?
No.
Okay. I've been before you guys on several occasions. This is a payable that's part of the reimbursement program with the State of Oregon. They approve specific residential and upgrades for homes for our in-home population. And this was an upgrade for our bathroom. The individuals who get the upgrades go out and get the bids and make the decision on the contractor. And we're very lucky to have this contractor because they don't get paid till after they do the work and get it approved. And so we're here to ask that they be paid. We've actually already got the money from the state. We got it last week.
So just for the record, it came from the state and not through general fund?
Absolutely from the state.
Okay.
So move.
And a second? All fair and motions, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Elections temporary employees. Is Dan on the?
He was.
Yeah, he's the thing.
Wait, do you want?
I'm the one.
When he has the property option. What, did I skip one?
He's here, though.
Oh. I skipped one, sorry, Dan.
We can come back to that one, that's no problem.
Come back to?
The property after.
So, Dan, you're up. Elections temporary employees.
Good morning, Commissioners. This, this table's tilted down a little bit more.
It moves.
Yeah, but watch your fingers.
Do you have a maintenance person that might?
I don't want to touch it, but, but thank you. This morning, discussion on hiring two temporary outreach assistants. So a little bit of background, the Elections Department, I've been working with Dr. Sherry Karpner at Eastern Oregon University and enlisting the help of their marketing class. And so they put together, their marketing class, they put together a marketing plan to try to create outreach to educate and promote voting in Oregon. So a couple of issues we have is misinformation, which can mean a lot of things. A lot, misinformation just goes around our primary election. People not understanding why they don't have candidates on their, on their ballots. Why isn't the Republican candidate or the Democratic candidate on my ballot? Well, that's because you're not affiliated, so you don't vote on either. Or why is the, only the Republican people on my ballot, not the Democratic people? Or vice versa. That creates misinformation. People don't understand because they're, they have lack of knowledge, are not educated that well. And to get ahead of a lot of that stuff, as we see as things have gone through in the last year, we've been bombarded with a lot of misinformation that we are doing things behind closed doors or whatever, because a lot of people don't understand what happens in the Elections Department. How can we resolve that? A lot of it is trying to get outreach materials. How can we educate? How can we get people more involved? How can we increase the involvement in Umatilla County? We are thirty-six out of thirty-six counties for voter turnout. And how do we get people to understand that they have to register or change your party twenty-one days prior to the primary election? And that is educate them and get that information out there. So we've been working with the marketing class. It took a lot of work to try to get to this point where we're at. Took a few years, but we finally have connections and are moving forwards. They've created a outreach program, started to. And now we would like to move to the next phase of that to actually hire a couple of these students during the summer to create the outreach materials that we need and develop the plan further. It is included a PowerPoint down at the bottom there of the outreach materials, which I think you've already seen, that the classes have put together. They put together some of these different ideas of how we can reach people. And they're going with, which interesting enough, right there, if you go back where it says you decide. Pull it down, yeah. There it says, you decide, you make the difference, without any prompting or anything. As we have, you co-help, the new generation, once you use that word of you. And so they created, you decide, you make the decision. Go ahead and scroll that down a little bit more to Uncle Sam down there. I think you'll, you'll find him in there too. Yeah, so you get involved. So they created some of this materials of some different ideas.
My English teacher friends are cringy right now.
Right.
I am, I am married to one of those rituals too. It was interesting, I was at the doctor office yesterday morning, and they wanted, the lady at the counter asked, are we vaccinated? I said, I don't know, I am, but I'm not sure about you. But to implement that, so we're looking at hiring two students for two months. And it would be fifty-six hundred dollars per student for a total of eleven thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars to do that, to work with us. This is a new pilot project. I think talking with a lot of the professors there, I also talked to another. I think it's a good way for us to branch, to utilize the, the great resource we have of Eastern Oregon University in our backyard here, and to give those students better actual work experience, to do things in the real world, and to create other ties. As I talked to some of the other professors when we were trying to make our way, I think there's other ventures that could be helpful for the planning department, some other things. But I think creating this dialogue, making that we're a partner in trying to work with these students, create a better educated, as we're always talking about, create a more educated workforce and stuff. How can we keep them in here? How can we get people involved and utilize the services we have? So I think this is a great thing to do. I'm asking for the approval to hire these two temporary students for fifteen dollars an hour for a total of eleven thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars for this summer. And hopefully, if this works well, it'd be nice to continue this project in the future, because things are constantly changing. And it's not just our department, I'm sure other departments may be able to use, utilize something similar.
Well, you got my attention, because I'm tired of being dead last when it comes to voter turnout across the state of Oregon, so.
We, if we needed to go, it would be tangible and measurable.
Yeah.
Find out really quick.
That's for sure.
Keep my fingers crossed. It might be a long road, but I'm hoping, you know, that we can beat maybe Jackson County or something. We'll have to see. I, I thought they were down there at the bottom. You know, it seems like where we have more conspiracy theory things going on. I don't know what, maybe I shouldn't say that, but.
Now we have those drop boxes all over.
Well, still, it takes, it takes a little bit of work to, actually. I think a lot is people don't, they have, there's a lot of fear behind a lot of things. I get a ballot, if I don't vote for everybody, people don't understand. You can only vote, you, you don't have to vote for anything. You can turn it in blank if you want. You can vote for one thing, but there's this lack of not understanding that they can do that. Or I don't know anybody on there. But there are some other information in there. Sometimes it's just hard to get them to open the ballot up to, to look inside. It's, but I think a lot of it is people just don't quite understand everything and how important it should be. And so when you start to get people more involved in understanding the process, I don't think our, our education process, when we come to government, is necessarily the best in our country. And I, you know, we kind of drop short. So part of it too would be maybe devising a plan to help work with some of our high schools and stuff.
All right, well, with that, I would move approval. Okay, you've got a motion, a second? All fair and motions, say aye? Aye?
All right, wonderful, thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Maintenance facility payables. Oh, we did skip that again.
Oh, that's okay.
No, let's go back, let's go back right now, property.
What's before the Board is authorization for, to set the annual auction to sell the property for, close on for property taxes. There are ten properties this year that would be available for sale. So the request is to go ahead and set the sale, along with the prices for the ten properties.
And that date would be May third?
Yes.
Okay. So I would move to adopt order TX two zero two two dash zero two.
Second.
Motion, second, all fair and motions, say aye? Aye? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now maintenance facility payables.
Good morning, commissioners. Mark Tanner, facilities manager, Umatilla County. Um, I'm a hoping user in the same order as I have them. Uh, first payable is for CNH Glass, for the window frames, for the new maintenance facility. Um, we worked with CNH Glass, did as much of the work as we could for the windows, and then they came in and did their part for the bill of five thousand and ninety dollars and thirteen cents.
Now, these are going to be separate, correct? So we're going to have to do each one as a separate entity. So, and so that one is the?
CNH Glass.
CNH Glass.
CNH Glass. And then this says storefront door frame, is that accurate?
No, it's, it's windows. I'm not sure why it says that.
Okay. And those windows, are they back ordered? Is that the deal?
Correct. Hence the plywood.
Got it. Okay, so with that, I move approval for the CNH Glass number one, in the amount of five thousand ninety dollars and thirteen cents.
Second.
Motion, second. All fair the motion, say aye? Aye?
If you have a motion, you can remove the plywood. I'll second that.
I, I will go with you on that one. Uh, second one is when, uh, when we had the city turn the water on to the building, we had literally probably forty leaks everywhere. Every pipe in the building was leaking, so we had to bring Merriman Plumbing in, uh, and basically replumb ninety-eight percent of the building. Um.
Now, it was seven thousand.
That is six thousand eight hundred and fifty-six dollars and forty-one cents.
Plus the new?
Plus.
The four hundred and seventy-one dollars.
The four hundred and seventy-one thirty-eight, correct.
So I would move approval to payment of Rob Merriman Plumbing, amount of seven thousand three hundred and twenty-seven dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Second.
Got motion, second. All fair the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. And number three, Murphy's?
I assume we're staying within our budget.
Yes.
I don't have the Murphy's one here.
Oh, let me scroll down, then I can get that for you.
I have a whole pile of tumbler.
Shouldn't hear a pile of tumbler.
It's right, right. Okay, here's, here's Murphy's.
Yeah, well, that's, keep going, there should be two of those.
Yeah. So the first one is for supplies for us to start running ductwork. Um, for, we're moving several of the units that we're able to reuse, and then there's.
From the old facility.
From the old facility. Well, no, not from that facility, from the existing facility. There was several units that were still usable. We're going to relocate them into different parts of the building, and so these are supplies for that process. And then, uh, what's the next one?
Should be the same amount, I think.
It's furnace and coil.
Yeah, so this was a repair of one of the existing units, um, that I deemed worth fixing versus replacing, so that's what that is.
So just out of curiosity, what's the difference between the repair cost of thirty-nine-fifty versus replacement cost?
Uh, replacement cost was nine thousand something.
Okay. And I'll second that, so, uh, so that's for Murphy's. So all fair the motion, say aye? Aye? Motion carries. And.
Okay, how do you want to do the tumbler?
All, all one.
All one?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have a total for?
Uh, the total, I think, was on?
Oh, it's on, it's on the pinky.
It's fifteen thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars and twenty-one cents.
Okay, so basically, these are all materials, um, that we're using to basically put the shop to where it's usable for us versus what it was previously.
Okay.
So framing for walls, drywall for walls, um, plywood exciting for filling in the holes of windows we eliminated, um, exterior, um, sheet metal to wrap around the stucco part of the building.
So does that include all the sheet metal for around the outside?
Around the stucco part of the building.
The stucco part, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, the other part of the building already has metal, so.
Okay, so just the stucco that doesn't have?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because the stucco is deteriorating and falling off, and the, the cost to repair the stucco far exceeded what I paid for the metal, so, um, it made more sense to do that.
All right. Well, I, and in light of the staggering cost of deflation to building materials.
Oh, that's terrible.
I would move approval to tumbler lumber in the amount of fifteen thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars and twenty-one cents, and I appreciate that it was local.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All fair the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. I think, is that all?
Is that all for me?
Uh, there's one more payable.
Oh, there's one more?
It's a separate one.
Oh, a separate payable, okay. So that's all the bound, so, this one.
Oh, this one says past due. I do not recall. I went back through my emails. I never received this bill initially when the work was done. Um, but this was for the removal of the dying tree, uh, in the corner here, and then trimming up and removing, um, several, several other issue trees that were causing damage to the foundation and creating leak points in the basement.
Is there a leak fee for this?
No.
No.
Okay. Okay, so.
I can't see the total, so.
Fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine, ten.
Fifty-nine, ten.
Here it is, right there.
Okay. With that, I move approval for payment?
Aye.
Motion, second. All fair the motion, say aye? Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. Number sixteen, survey contracts.
You want to go ahead and skip that one for now, and then I'll let public help. They've been patiently waiting.
Okay. Public health software contract.
Good morning, commissioners. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. Good morning.
All right, Alicia Lundgren, deputy director with Umatilla County Public Health. The first item we have is for a, a software contract to use for our septic system. Uh, we were previously using HealthSpace, and that was both for the food pool lodging program that we switched to, and then we added septic into that, and then HealthSpace is now migrating to CloudSuite, um, as part of the state program, and then we're proposing today to pay to add in the septic program to CloudSuite as well, so that the whole environmental health program is on the same data system. This system will allow for, um, public records to be available online and allow for fees to be collected online. And the, the fee that we're requesting to pay is seventy-five hundred for one-time configuration data conversion, and then a five thousand dollar annual fee. Uh, so it's twenty-five hundred dollars for this first year, and then it'll be five thousand each year after that. And that'll be paid for through the onsite, uh, septic program fees.
Okay, got a motion for approval, and I'll second. Any further discussion?
No.
All fair the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. You have another one, too, I believe. Public health.
Yes. So our second item is a payment, uh, to Oregon Department of Human Services for an audit fee that needs to be paid back essentially. So our, in February of 2020, uh, we had an audit of one of our home visiting programs. So we, our, that home visiting program bills Medicaid, and so they did a Medicaid audit of services that were provided from 2013 to 2017, reviewing billing procedures. Um, because there were errors found during that audit, we are liable for paying back, uh, some of that money in the amount of ten thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight dollars and forty-six cents. Uh, there's a couple of things that I'll add of note. All the counties got reviewed for this timeframe at the same time back in 2020, and all the counties had multiple errors that were found and kind of have been going through this process of needing to pay back this money as well. Because of that, um, in the last few, couple of years, uh, since this was an audit back in 2020, we've implemented new forms so that these errors won't happen in the future with future Medicaid audits. Uh, so hopefully we've resolved the issue, but we do need to pay back, um, this money that was paid to us and, um, were found incorrect during the auditing process.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
Comment, that was ludicrous, but I will move to pay it.
Second, the motion and the ludicrous comment. Any further discussion on the motion? All fair the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to go back to the survey contracts.
The board is being requested to approve three surveying services contracts. Uh, this is paid through the public land conserva-, uh, corner preservation fund. Uh, this are done on a biannual basis, and they're now before the board for a formal approval. There are three of them. One to be at PBS Engineering and Environmental in the amount of two hundred and twenty-three thousand, five hundred dollars. Supreme Land Surveying in the amount of seventy-five thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars and sixty-eight cents. And the final one to well surveying in the amount of forty-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Do we need to have three motions?
No, these can all be approved at one time.
Second. Uh, any further discussion on the motion? All fair the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. The Weir Grants. I see Mr. Walters left the room.
Um, if you want to, did you want to handle that, or?
I, I can do that, yeah. I was there, so. Uh, so the Athena Weston Education and Resource Enhancement Plan Board has recommended the following, the finding, funding of the grants for the Community Benefit Plan for 2022, and the grants are before the board for approval. Um, the first one's the City of Weston, uh, for their park kitchen, any amount of fifteen thousand, eight hundred and nineteen dollars. Uh, Umatilla County Hazard Prep for Emergency Management in the amount of ten thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars, fifty cents. Caldorian Games, uh, was electrical and water for any amount of two thousand seven hundred and eighty for utility upgrades. Number four was East Umatilla County Ambulance and Fire and Rescue ATV, in the amount of nineteen thousand, eight hundred and nineteen dollars. Uh, the Umatilla County Pioneer Association Pioneer Days, the amount of five thousand dollars. Keys Blumout Cemetery for fence repair in the amount of two thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars. East Umatilla Fire and Rescue ATV and Software, nineteen thousand, eight hundred and nineteen dollars. Uh, Weston Middle School, uh, for playground and court for thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars. Athena Elementary Track for shade structures, uh, forty-six thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars and fifty cents. And Weston McEwen High School for LED lighting upgrades in the amount of seventeen thousand, eight hundred and nineteen dollars. Um, total requested was one hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and that's what we move for approval to the board of commissioners. And it's, uh, with that, I would recommend approval and, uh, for order BCC-2022-020.
Second.
Got motion, second. All fair the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. County Government Month.
We have a proclamation, uh, provided by the National Association of Counties, symbolizing the fact that this is National County Month, and I, uh, move that we adopt that proclamation. BCC. Twenty-two-two dash zero-one-eight.
I'll second the motion. All fair the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. City of Ukiah Grant.
Do we want to? Mine, too. We've been asked by the City of, of Ukiah to, uh, to provide support for extension of their water system, approximately four hundred feet of their water system that would extend from the end of the City of Ukiah to the, uh, site of the Canesbury Cowboy Convention, uh, which is scheduled to have its grand opening in June, and I would move for approval of the grant.
The grant, the grant was in the amount of forty thousand dollars, and I'll second the motion. All fair the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. Okay, next item on the agenda is City of Pendleton payable. Is that yours, too? That's for the Oxley and Associates?
Oh, yeah. Uh, I, this is part of our, our ongoing legislative effort on behalf of City of Pendleton. They were matching for Merriman Turniston, but this one only relates to Pendleton, and we've had excellent results from this relationship, so I move that we pay this.
Uh, and that was in the amount of ten thousand dollars.
And it did result, just for the record, one of the first achievements was Farm Two and the Jib Innovation, so.
So ten thousand dollars well spent. Uh, I'll second that motion. All fair the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. And supplemental budgets, so we'll suspend our regular meeting and go into public hearing mode.
Good morning, commissioners. Robert Paul, CFO, uh, with the staff report for the supplemental budgets before you this morning. There are four supplemental budgets, uh, this is summary of those. Budget Order 2022-48, General Fund GIS Program requires a supplemental funding to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in local revenue of forty-five hundred dollars, an increase in state revenue of twenty-two thousand dollars, and an increase in materials and services of twenty-six thousand, five hundred dollars. Budget Order 2022-50, General Fund Communicable Disease Program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in local revenue of four thousand dollars, an increase in state revenue of one million, three hundred fifty-one thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars, an increase in personnel services of one hundred and eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars, an increase in materials and services of twenty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty-one dollars, and an increase in contingency of one million, one hundred and forty-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars. Budget Order 2022-51, the care program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in local revenue of twenty-two thousand dollars, an increase in state revenue of fourteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars, an increase in personnel services of fifteen thousand dollars, and an increase in materials and services of twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars. And Budget Order 2022-52, Facilities Reserve, requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in beginning cash balance of four hundred thousand dollars, an increase in state revenue of one million, eight hundred thousand dollars, an increase in capital outlay of three million, two hundred thousand dollars, and a decrease in contingency of one million dollars.
Your Robert. Uh, any questions from commissioners or comments?
Not useful if Melinda went back to the top.
Any questions from the public?
This one.
Hearing none. Uh, we will come out of hearing mode and go back into the regular meeting.
I move for the adoption of Budget Order 2022-48.
Second. All fair the motion, say aye?
Aye. I move for the adoption of, uh, Budget Order 2022-50.
Second. All fair the motion, say aye?
Aye. I move the adoption of Budget Order 2022-51.
Second. All fair the motion, say aye?
Aye. And I move the adoption of Budget Order 2022-52.
Second. All fair the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. And number twenty-four, budget transfers.
Uh, again, um, I have a summary of the budget transfers before you. There are five of them. Um, I'll present that summary. Uh, Budget Order 2022-44 Corrections Assessment requires a transfer of appropriation to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of thirty thousand dollars and a decrease in transfers out of thirty thousand dollars. Budget Order 2022-45, Human Services Alcohol and Drug, requires a transfer of appropriation to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires a decrease in transfers in of thirty thousand dollars and a decrease, decrease in personnel services of thirty thousand dollars. Budget Order 2022-46, GIS Equipment Reserve, requires a transfer of appropriation to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of six thousand dollars and a decrease in capital out, outlay of six thousand dollars. Budget Order 2022-47- Budget Order 2022-47, Stimulus Reserve Program, requires a transfer of appropriation to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in capital outlay of $1,900,000, and a decrease in contingency of $1,900,000. Budget Order 2022-49, Home Visit Program, requires a transfer of appropriation to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires a decrease in personnel services of $54,450, and an increase in materials and services of $54,450.
I move for the adoption of Budget Order 2022-44.
Second. I'll fair the motion, say aye. Aye?
Move for the adoption of Budget Order 2022-45.
Second. I'll fair the motion, say aye. Aye?
Move for the adoption of Budget Order 2022-46.
Second. I'll fair the motion, say aye. Aye?
Move for the adoption of Budget Order 2022-47.
Second. I'll fair the motion, say aye. Aye?
Move for the adoption of Budget Order 2022-49.
Second. I'll fair the motion, say aye. Aye? Motion carries. Motion's carry. Okay, with that, we've hit the end of our agenda. Thank you. Any comments from commissioners? Commissioner Rock?
Lord, no.
Agreed. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Doug, I didn't see the sign here thing, but I think I was supposed to sign.